Everyone, the regular council meeting of Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at four forty P M in council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation, and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of the Algonquin and Injunabe, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship to these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor La Chava. Be resolved at the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three via progress circulated.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of the culinary interests. Councilor Shaba?
Uh, we may have a disclosure of the culinary interest. I have my form here and I will read it. Uh, I like Shava declaring direct deal or indirect culinary interest. The agenda of the meeting dated Tuesday, December nineteen, two thousand and three. Local meeting, agenda item number six point two. Uh, agenda title is Territory Water Agency Contract Amendment. This is an indirect, so some state holder director of uh, official and private corporations affected. Uh, the nature of my interest is as follows. Aqua has contacted my engineering firm to do some engineering related design and design and provide a report. Thank my name, uh, relevant to my name and the signature I text to this.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, petitions and delegations. There are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations. Item five point one, council minutes.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owen, seconded by Councilor La Duncan. Be resolved with council thirty minutes of the following meetings. And that's the regular meeting of council held September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item five point two, community council minutes.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Kiley. Be resolved at council about the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Kirkland Lake Committee of Adjustment dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and minutes of the Special Meeting of the Kirkland Lake Committee of Adjustment dated December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item five point three, local and regional board minutes.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor La Chava. Be resolved at council receive the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the Tempest Community Hospital Association dated November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications. Item six point one, two thousand and twenty-two annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System, Brian Springer, manager, operations, and environmental services.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here today. Hopefully that you have me there now. I think I was talking to myself. Sorry. Uh, anyways, um, Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here today to present the two thousand and twenty-two annual summary report. We learned quite recently, this report was meant to have been presented to council and posted on our website by March thirty-first of this year as per regulations. This was missed by myself and all also actually, um, Stefan, which was an oversight uh, from being at our new, new post. Uh, this report, however, uh, submitted by Aqua was within the proper timeframe, but the steps to follow were missed. We are presenting it now. And the next annual water report will be submitted prior to March thirty-first. I consulted with the MECP Environmental Officer in this regard and was assured there's no penalty, financial or otherwise, imposed on the town by not having the report presented to council and posted on the website. The regulation speaks to best practices for municipalities, ensuring accountability and transparency. The two twenty-two reported here to the required components. First, the description of the system and chemicals used. Secondly, summary of any adverse water quality reports and corrective actions taken. Third, summary of required testing. And lastly, description of major expenses and equipment installed, repaired, or replaced. There were fourteen noteworthy issues listed in the report for the water treatment plant. There were five noteworthy issues for the water distribution system. And there were four adverse water quality incidents. All incidents were resolved. In two thousand and twenty-two, the average daily flow was approximately ten thousand two hundred cubic meter, which represents forty-five percent of the water plant's ability to, uh, process water. And the maximum daily flow was fourteen thousand seven hundred cubic meters, which represents sixty-five percent of capacity. Kirkland Lake's water, uh, drinking water system can meet the demand and the requirements for the town in accordance with all applicable permits and licenses. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council? Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, your worship, to, uh, Mr. Schmear. Um, the adverse water effects, uh, events, are they up from the year before, down from the year before, the same?
Uh, I didn't really have a, uh, comparison on that note, uh, Councilor Owens. Um, as I just started, uh, October, uh, twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-two. Um, I don't know if it's more or if it's less. But what we have here is what I've seen during my thirty-eight years in this business is very, uh, very, very, um, very normal, actually.
Thank you.
Councilor Owens?
Um, in the report, in the Aqua section of the report, uh, pages, I would assume are sixteen of twenty-seven starts there. There's a Schedule Twenty-two summary reports for municipalities. If I compare it to two thousand and twenty-one, I know you weren't there, but it's three pages long. And in two thousand and twenty-two, it's eight pages long. And there's numerous violations or uh, different moments where we were in non-compliance. Why? Like, one, one incident, like, there's thirty-seven occurrences where we were not in compliance from December to two thousand and twenty-one to July of two thousand and twenty-two.
Uh, Councilor Owens, in regards to the two thousand and twenty-one, I did not look at that.
It's not two thousand and twenty-one, it's two thousand and twenty.
I'm sorry, pardon me?
It's two thousand and twenty-two. It's, it's for the two thousand and twenty-two report that you submitted. There's eight pages of deficiencies.
That's on the inspection report that you're saying, or?
Yeah, so, uh, it's the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System Schedule Twenty-two Summer Report for Municipalities. That's page sixteen, Washington.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, well, the further part I'm referring to is sixteen of twenty-seven. It's the Aqua part of the report that you submitted.
Okay, I'm just trying to flip to that. Um, yeah, excuse me, I, uh, traveled for, uh, seven and a half hours, so I might be just a little groggy. But, uh, bear with me on that. So, in the two thousand and twenty-two annual summary report, I don't, I don't see what you're referring to.
It's page sixteen of twenty-seven.
Okay.
And there's eight pages worth of, like, some of them are based on a SCADA system, SCADA system that got switched over. Alarms going off and not, people not being trained on them properly or following proper procedures.
Right.
Logbooks not properly maintained, uh.
Right, and this is why that there is an MECP inspection to ensure all of the accountability and the transparency, be it by Aqua or any other operating authority. What they had were, uh, essentially, uh, best practices. Um, there were some things that they were given actually a timeline to actually address in which, which they had met. Um, so what was identified was, uh, there was a bit of a dilapidation of the, of the equipments, hence the, uh, upgrade to the SCADA system and such. Um, so they can only work with what they have, actually. And these, uh, uh, non-conformances that have been identified by the environmental officer just, uh, points out actually that, uh, these, these were issues noted during the inspection. And, um, Aqua, uh, dealt with all of the concerns, uh, actually immediately.
So I shouldn't be worried about the fact that we go from three pages the year before to eight pages last year?
From what I, what I have read, no. Uh, that speaks to more of your system. Uh, uh, system being all of the way that they gather data. And that, that was upgraded to my understanding a year prior before I arrived. With the SCADA system that was chosen, it was not an off-the-shelf, uh, underwear type thing, but an actual customized system. And they've had a little, little bit of, uh, growing pains, um, like with that. In which case they were working on it again, uh, earlier this year.
Councilor Owen?
Through you, Madam Mayor, don't we pay Aqua so we don't have these incidents? I mean, isn't that what we're paying off before to ensure that everything works smoothly and they catch them before there are incidents? That's where I'm getting a little confused.
Well, you're absolutely right, and these were unforeseen. These things, uh, actually occurred due, due to the, to the state of the system in place at the time. So as these issues, uh, arose, uh, they were duly noted and, uh, uh, corrective action by Aqua was, uh, implemented immediately.
Thank you. Anything further for, oh, sorry, Councilor Owen?
Yeah, just a follow-up on that. Aqua's been running that plant for many years now. Um, I would have thought they would have, uh, caught up on these things as the plant was operating, and I would have thought they would have come to council as they have often, asking for more money to correct the system. So all of a sudden, say, we got a new SCADA system and all these problems showed up. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Right, and I asked the exact same thing, uh, actually, Councilor Owens. And the, uh, uh, fellow that, uh, was awarded the SCADA upgrade contract would not have been my choice, but it was a choice made, uh, due on price. And from my understanding, um, all of the patchwork required to ensure that that fellow's, uh, work for our SCADA system functioned properly has been ongoing. I think we pretty much have it actually resolved now as Aqua pulled in their own I A T group. Who, uh, Aqua being actually a crown corporation. They have, uh, unlimited, unlimited resources in that sense. Um, so, um, with respect to any more of these issues happening, I, I, I can't say, say it won't. Alls I know is everything that has actually arisen, they have, uh, drafted immediately. And so moving forward, no one knows, I mean, things fail, right? So, um, but I think we're pretty much there on having a rock-solid SCADA system now.
Thank you. Councilor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, my question is, um, Brian, how did it come to yours and Stefan's attention that you missed the deadline to post and submit that report?
Actually, I just found out about a week or so ago. And it was actually an oversight. Um, Stefan and I, we had a lot on our plate, happened quickly. Uh, I know that the annual was actually re-received. I was not aware of the, um, report to, uh, council nor the, uh, onus of responsibility to ensure that that was on our website. I know now, and I can assure you, uh, moving forward, this will not be, 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 be an issue again.
Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, to you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Brian, I, uh, I looked at this and uh, there are a few columns whereby, uh, corrective actions have been taken on some of the items, and I uh, zoom into, uh, page twenty-one of twenty-seven of the same report, and the corrective action slash actions column was blank. So is that, and I assume that corrective actions are pending on those sides, like on the boost Tuesday? Yeah. Yeah, they're blank.
Right, well, actually, Councilor Shaba, that you'll find all of the corrective actions are, uh, listed in the column, requirements to system fail, fail to meet. They, they've identified the issue, and they, and they have identified the corrective action there.
All right, we got it. Thank you.
Thank you. C A O, Alan Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to you, Council. Uh, yes, this report was late, there's no question. It should have been addressed by March. And, uh, we are dealing with this internal matter, and, uh, but I can assure you that the next report due March twenty-four, Algonquin. So, I, um, uh, we are done with the internal.
Anything further on the report? None noted, Madam, uh, Madam Kirk?
Moved by Councilor Casey Owen, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. Be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty-three, P W twenty, entitled two thousand and twenty-two annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System received. And the council hereby accepts the two thousand and twenty-two annual summary report for the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System as presented. And finally, that two thousand and twenty-two annual summary report for, for the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System be published on the town's official website. And a copy being made available for public viewing at the Public Works Office on Doncaster Road.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Thank you, sir. Item number six point two, Ontario Clean Water Agency Contract Amendment. Stefan Forte, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and thank you for having me, uh, through you to council. I'm here today to recommend a two-year extension to Aqua's contract with the town. This would make it their third extension to the original contract. Aqua has been helping our town for just about thirty years, and for the past eight years, Aqua has undertaken the operation and maintenance for both water plant and wastewater plant. And, uh, they, they've provided a great service to the town. Aqua services many communities near and around Kirkland Lake, which provides us with very quick and convenient access to a large team of operators, technicians, and mechanics. In the proposed amending agreement, the majority of the changes were very minor as Aqua is in the process of standardizing all their agreements with municipalities, and they have to abide by new agreement templates approved by their legal department. There are two notable changes worth mentioning. The first is a change to the contract wording that would permit council to accept a renewal term greater than two years. This would mean, for the next renewal in two years from now, the council will have the ability to choose between a two, five, and ten-year extension term. Longer-term contracts typically have financial benefits. The second notable change is the inflationary adjustment on year two of the proposed amending agreement. The yearly adjustment used to be two percent and has now been changed to say the greater of C P I or two percent. C P I is the Consumer Price Index. Data from Statistics Canada is used to determine the C P I, and this is considered to be a fair method to evaluate for inflationary adjustments. Aqua's a great support to our town, and the rega, sorry, the recommendation stands to extend their contract with the town for a further two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open the table for questions and comments, I just want to know that due to the level of personal liability each member at this table, uh, holds in this singular item. Water is the only item where you can be held personally, uh, responsible for any decisions made. Um, there is comfort knowing that we are dealing with, um, Ontario's largest crown agency. There is definitely an advantage for sharing this responsibility with an agency of the crown. So that being said, I'll open the floor. Any questions or comments? Councilor Kiley?
Uh, yeah, on, during the past, uh, previous term, I had the opportunity of talking with the manager of the, uh, water treatment plant in Waterton. Uh, they had been using Aqua. Uh, they, it, contract came up, they put it up for tender and R F P. And, uh, during that time, Aqua actually lowered their price uh, from what they were charging by about close to fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, Waterton ended up going with, uh, with this substitute company. Uh, there is an advantage to, uh, requesting an R F P. Um, it also keeps Aqua on their toes from a pricing standpoint, I believe, and and as far as, uh, quality of service. So I, I would have liked to have seen an R F P, uh, issued in this regard. We'll see what happens.
Thank you. Anything from Council, Councilor Owens?
Owen.
Owen, sorry, thank you, sir.
It's contagious. Through you, your worship. If it wasn't for my personal liability, and I want to make that quite clear for the public, if we make a decision at this council table concerning water, and then, and that decision ends up harming or killing people, we are liable for damages. There is no insurance that covers us, okay? So this, that means everything I've worked for my whole life could be gone based on a decision I make at this table. And that's why this contract is very different than any other contract we deal with. If it wasn't for that liability, I would have, it would be a no-brainer for me. We do not give out contracts for life. It should go to an R F P. Because of that liability, I'm a little bit hesitant, but at the same time, as a counselor, I'm responsible to do its best for residents of Kirkland Lake. The provincial laws, the provincial standards for all the people who work in, uh, water, they're all the same. Every company that operates a facility has to meet the same standards. So whether we go with a private company or a crown corporation, all the rules, regulations, and employee requirements are the same. All the testing requirements are the same. All the quality control requirements are the same. So I'm at ease with going with a public company based on that. And you know, we are here to get the best financially that we can for residents as well. And quite frankly, uh, if I figured I was going to get my contract extended for two years, every two years, I wouldn't have much incentive to sharpen my pencil. Um, so I, I, I got mixed feelings. My decision will be made when we take a vote. But there is one thing in here that, that concerns me. And it's, uh, in the report, it says, "In the last decade, Aqua has renewed one hundred percent of its O N M agreements in northeastern and northwestern Ontario." Well, when Eve Lebel was here, as our manager, our director of public works, and also as our C A O for a short time, uh, he told us that Capes Casing dropped Aqua. Um, and I know from the media that Armstrong Township and other reginaldton had also dropped Aqua as their operator. Now, maybe it wasn't in the last ten years, but there are these two communities, the northeastern and the, that had Aqua and then went another direction, so. Like I say, I will make my decision at, at vote time, but it's a difficult decision for everybody sitting at this table because of the liability.
Anything further for members of the table?
If, if my, your, your worship can finally respond to Rick. I, I appreciate your concern. The liability aspect is going to be the same with either operator, in, in my view. So I don't see that as, as an issue, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Nothing further from the, oh, Councilor Duncan's?
Through, um, Mayor to council, um, I, I'm hearing the concerns, and, but I'm also looking that are set to expire December the first. Maybe next time we can have it deal with this earlier so that, uh, we can, um, look to see if there's a, a better alternative. If not, then we continue, but I just think at this point we really don't have choice. We are, unless anybody has.
Yeah, so, um, at this point, I'm just gonna have Stefan Forte, um, interject, um, from that standpoint.
Through you, uh, Mayor, to, uh, Councilor. Um, what was the question again? Sorry, you're gonna have to repeat the question. Sorry.
I didn't have a question. So we're,
In regards to why it arrived later in the year, yes. Uh, the contract usually stipulates that the negotiations start within the first six months of the last year of the contract, which would mean that we should have presented this much earlier in the year. And due to several circumstances and back and forth with Aqua trying to, to sort the And due to several circumstances and back and forth with Aqua trying to sort the changes, we were only able to accommodate at this time of the year, and we do apologize for that. The option as listed in the contract, sorry, not the contract, but the report to council and alternative is to let the contract roll over. And then it would force us into an RFP for in two thousand twenty-four. But again, that's not the recommendation that we're putting forward.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Counselor Ranger.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I just want to publicly reiterate that as much as Counselor Owen has expressed the personal liability, there are five circles that need to be broken before personal liability. So I don't want to scare the public into thinking that we're only making decisions to protect ourselves as personal citizens. I think it's great that Waterton, specifically cited by Counselor Kylie, has the option as a southern Ontario community to have competitors closer to them to make RFPs more fiscally responsible in their part to send out. Seeing that we shouldn't consider that, I just think that we have more or less options than other communities south of us. I like the opportunity going forward that we can look at longer locked-in contracts that will be able to predict the costs longer term. And hopefully, I'd like more feedback from the treasurer if they recommend this going forward. That's my statement on the process in front of us. Thank you.
Counselor Owens?
I echo through you, Madam Mayor, a vote, Counselor Ranger's position on this one. You know, I believe you should just move forward with this one with the optic or the idea of the net contract not automatically renewed, like with this tender in the next two years, get a proper longer-term agreement with Aqua, whoever bids on it. But there is comfort in knowing that Aqua is in northeast Ontario. They have access to different resources that are good, are on hand easily, like get staff is not easy nowadays. I couldn't see us having to do this in-house right now, or you know, trying to bring in other contractors or whatever moving forward with this.
Thank you. Counselor Dykens?
To Madam Mayor, to Director Forten, I just, for clarity, he said we're not voting on just two years and then we can open. So that's, I just want confirmation. We're voting on two years plus. Is that? I just want clarity. Yeah, thanks.
Of course, I'll clarify. Yes, this proposed amending agreement is for two years. And what's been included for the next contract renewal, which will be in two years from now, the council will have the option then to have either a two-, a five-, or a ten-year extension. This will choose. It just gives council more options for the next term.
The follow-up. So do we have the option a year and a half from now to send RFP out for other possible service providers? Or you're saying we're locked into this if we vote yes on this?
No, we are not locked in. The way it would work is if the town would desire to go to an RFP during the year of two thousand twenty-five. In this case, we would simply have to follow the terms of the contract to exit the contract and go in in this fashion. There would be technically no issues with it. We're not locked in.
Counselor Kiley?
Yeah, I would support renewal of this agreement. Keeping in mind, as Counselor Owen has stated, in two years that we look at this a lot in advance and look at the possibility of an RFP. I think the RFP is the route to go, but timewise, I think I can live with this contract. Thank you.
Counselor Owen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is not a question about, it's a question about RFP. What is our legal responsibility when we issue an RFP? I know there's a difference, a legal difference, or at least I've been told there's a legal difference between a tender and a RFP. And I know that, I believe that unless we have a good reason, we're obligated to go with the lower price. I'm not sure, but that's, I'd like clarification. I'm not expecting it tonight if nobody has it. But I'd like clarification on that because it's not just important here, but it's also important otherwise because if we're not obligated to go with the lowest bid, then that changes whether or not how easy it is for me to say, yeah, let's put it for an RFP, right? The other thing I want to point out is that there are a number of companies currently operating in Kirkland Lake that are huge multinational companies that I never thought I'd see the day that they would operate in a small town in northeastern Ontario. We only have to look at our garbage and our busing for two examples. Companies are now bidding on contracts. There are also companies in Quebec that provide the same services, but have indicated they are looking at northeastern Ontario.
Thank you. The treasurer has stepped up to answer your.
Through you, Madam Mayor, Counselor Owen and other counselors. Do my best to kind of fill in a couple of holes about the RFP process. The RFP process is fairly flexible when you design your RFPs. But for the most part, most of them have wording in them that doesn't, you're not required to accept the lowest bid. They typically have grids or point systems that you can make your decisions based on. So if you value, for example, quality or pure dollars, just very simple, you know, teeter-totter type of mentality, you have the option to not accept the lowest bid. It's common to accept the lowest bid, but as commented earlier, you know, if the quality standards are the same, then, you know, it's probably, there's some level of notice physically, fiscally, to accept the lowest bid. But most of our RFPs that I have seen have that wording in it. There's that wording saying the lowest bid is not automatically accepted. Paraphrasing, forgive me. So to put you at ease when you're ready to send something like this to our RFP, you know, we'll endeavor to make sure that we keep as many options open as possible. And you're certainly not going to be forced to take one vendor over another just because of the submissions. Quality and the content in the submissions will be the, I would imagine, be the deciding factors.
Thank you. Anything more from the table? Nothing further. I'll have the motion read.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, separated by Counselor Casey Owens. Be resolved in Report Number twenty-two-three-PW-16 entitled Ontario Clean Water Agency Aqua Contract Amendment Be Retained. And the council hereby approve the town entering to an amending agreement with Aqua for operations and maintenance services of the water and wastewater treatment systems as presented. And then council, sorry, and that's the mayor, the municipal court be authorized to enter into an amended agreement on behalf of the corporation and the county personally with the Aqua extending the existing contract for services for an additional two-year term for the following consideration. Year one, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. And year two and subsequent years, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars plus an inflationary adjustment, the greater of CPI or two percent, plus an adjustment for maintaining the insurance, which is renewed annually by Aqua and filed out of execution by law, be brought forward for three readings on January ninth, twenty-two.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Thank you. Someone might have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six point three, interim financial report, year to date as of September thirtieth, twenty-two-three. Mr. Laurie Crawford, Treasurer.
Through you, Madam Mayor, through you to council. I have in your packages a multi-page presentation of where we sat at September thirtieth. Used essentially the same methodology as we did the last interim financial reporting, choosing twenty percent as our cutoff where we were going to provide comments within the report. You know, of course, welcome to ask any prominent questions you'd like this evening. Do my best to answer them. Overall, I think what you're seeing is a report that shows very consistent spending and results with what we budget for the year. One more comment. The one significant area that you'll see there's no adjustments for, and that's the transfers lines that are spread throughout the report. And those are essentially, well, they're almost impossible to make before the year end. They incorporate, you'll see it later in the reserves motion, bylaw stuff that we talk about. They incorporate things like surpluses for the year, transfers to capital. And depending, you know, we have, I don't know, something close to fifty capital projects on the go. And some of them are humming along, spending money, getting things done. Some are kind of stuck in the sand waiting for, you know, whatever it might be, anything from, you know, a product to come in to delay, all kinds of delays, you know, COVID kind of changed the world on us. So those transfers don't happen. I don't intend to make them until actually year end. And that's mostly just because I don't really want to put estimates in there, large estimates in there that could change significantly. The rest of the figures are pretty current. And like I said, there's not an awful lot in there that's significantly different, but I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions from the table? Counselor Ranger?
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor. First statement, want to thank you and your department. I am not very experienced in fiscal reports, but this is clear. And your actual report, not the spreadsheet, identified something that I want to ask a question. Is there any way that council can help support the clear bottleneck game that your department is getting by not receiving invoices in a timely manner in order for you to be able to rectify the budgets? Is there something that we can propose or bring forward to help enforce or support your department?
I guess my sure answer is probably not. We do our best to put some pressure on suppliers. Some of them are, I guess they're living in a very healthy world where they don't need to invoice immediately and get payment. I'm not sure what the reason, some obviously are suffering their own problems about timeliness and getting stuff out the door. But true answer is no, probably not. I appreciate the sentiment, and if I had some other way to put the pressure on, I'd be happy to use it. But, you know, we are, I think we're very much a purchaser of preference. We pay in a very timely manner. We're conscientious about not drawing the process out unless there's a reason to draw the process out. And I think most suppliers make an effort. Unfortunately, some of our government agencies, which can, they could argue at the time. And some of them are just large organizations that their accounting departments don't move at a pace that, you know, that we can adapt, change.
Thank you for that. Anything further from council?
Another reading of the motion, sir. Moved by Counselor Lachama, separated by Counselor Janice Ranger. Be resolved with Report Number twenty-three-Fin-16 entitled Interim Financial Report, Year to Date, as of September thirtieth, twenty-two-three, be received for information.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item six point four, twenty-two-three, reserve and reserve funds and year-end transfers, Laurie Crawford, Treasurer.
Thank you. Good, Madam Mayor. Through you to council. This is a process that we have to follow, driven mostly by accounting standards. The reality for a municipality is depending on if you're running surpluses or deficits, you're supposed to take that into account in the next year, you know, irrevocably. So if you ran a surplus of five hundred thousand dollars, the top line in your next year's budget would be a five hundred thousand dollar surplus. This, this report and your approval of it indicates that we're allowed to move some of those dollars into reserves and reserve funds. It's very wordy, but that's just to make sure we're capturing all the scenarios we think can happen. But primarily, it's just driven by the fact that we want to have the ability to move surplus dollars into reserve rather than be forced to incorporate them in the very next year's budget. Typically, the numbers are not big. They were over COVID, and we're still seeing something of a lag there. When you see the audited statements, you'll see a similar type of process. This is driven primarily by the accounting standards, though, and Municipal Act, which requires a certain way to budget. And we just want to give you guys some options in your planning for the future. Happy to answer questions again.
Thank you. Any questions from the table? None noted. I'll have a reading of the motion.
Moved by Counselor Rick Owen, separated by Counselor Kylie. Be resolved in Report Number twenty-two-three-Fin-17 entitled Twenty-two-three Reserve and Reserve Fund and Year End Transfers Be Received. And filed that Council, where the treasurer completes the following transfers related to the twenty-two-three fiscal year end. Any net revenues from central land sales to the community improvement program reserve. Any net revenue from sale of land located on Orchard Drive to the Orchard Drive Reserve Fund. Any net revenues from a leased public care building on Fleet Street to the care reserve. Any winter control surplus, i.e. actual expenses less than budget, to the winter control stabilization reserve. Any operating surplus to the reserve for working capital. Any surplus in the waterworks to the waterworks reserve fund. Any surplus in wastewater, wastewater to the wastewater reserve fund. Any unspent portion of the tax of eight dollars for twenty-two-three capital projects to the infrastructure capital reserve amount to the library programming reserve and the library capital reserve fund in accordance with motions provided by the Kirkland Lake Public Library Board. Amounts from the infrastructure capital reserve fund, any overspent portion of capital projects, excluding waterworks and wastewater capital projects completed in twenty-two-three where no alternative sources of funding are available, to the extent that a balance exists in that reserve. Amounts from the waterworks reserve fund to fund any overspent portion of waterworks capital projects completed in twenty-two-three where no alternative sources of funding are available, to the extent that a balance exists in that reserve fund. And amounts from the wastewater reserve fund to fund any overspent portion of wastewater capital projects completed in twenty-two-three where no alternative sources of funding are available, to the extent that a balance exists in that reserve fund.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Yes, sir?
I just, I just want a clarification on the difference between reserves and reserve funds because this has been an issue in the past and it's not clear in my mind.
Okay, so Counselor Owen, can we just do the voting first, and then you can ask for clarification after? Okay, thank you. Okay, so all in favor?
Sure.
Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Please, could you just clear up the difference? I know we do this every year, but I think it's important for anybody tuning in. Yes.
Yeah, that's a bit of a loaded question. It's essentially an accounting Municipal Act characterization. Both of them behave in the same way. It is council's decision earmarked monies for future purposes, both reserves and reserve funds. The most significant difference between reserves and reserve funds is that reserve funds, we actually segregate cash. We put cash in a separate bank account to match the amounts put into reserve funds. They are in their own interest and, you know, it's in a world where if the municipality was not in a very good cash flow position, it would show up significantly in your planning and your decision-making, whether you go to the bank for lines of credit and stuff like that. In our world right now, we're healthy on the cash side. So practically speaking, it's not an awful lot of difference. But from an accounting standards point of view and Municipal Act point of view, it is significantly different. You use, this council uses the same mechanisms for both of them too. It's by bylaw or budget that you make those changes. Hopefully, that helps a little.
Yes, thank you, and I think that's important. I do appreciate the request for clarification because anybody new tuning in that hasn't been sitting with us for the last five, ten, fifteen years, and people do, I think it's very important. So thank you for that request for clarification. And thank you, sir. At this time for considerations and notices of motion, I'm going to ask acting mayor, Counselor Ranger. councillor Ranger, I am acting mayor Janice Ranger to take the seat.
Considerations of notices of motion, seven point one, Mayor Stacy White, amendments to the legislation act.
So thank you, uh, acting mayor Ranger. So this item is actually more or less a high housekeeping item more than anything. Um, as media changes and new streams are used, legislation should really keep up and include these new technologies and methods of sharing municipal information to the public. So what we're just asking here is for support, it came out of a different municipality who has unfortunately lost their local newspapers. And thankfully, we still have our, our print media. Um, but we are moving into a digital age and legislation should keep up with new technologies as that thing come forward. So that's really honestly all I have to say about this support motion.
Seconded by councillor Rick Owen.
Yes, to you, acting mayor Ranger. That's my old business and it it's, uh, it's sad to see what's happened. When I moved here just over forty years ago, we had a daily newspaper. Albeit the second smallest in Canada, but we had a daily newspaper. And then it went to three times a week. And now, um, it's down to, and and when I started, there was more than forty people working in that building. Um, now it's down to, uh, once a week. With one employee in town and, uh, very little local news content. It's sad to see. And based on that, I don't I don't, uh, think it's unreasonable to foresee the day in the not-too-distant future when we no longer have a paper edition coming out. Um, they can put out an online edition much cheaper. And, uh, let's face it, newspapers are businesses. They're there to make money. So I think it's important that the legislation keeps up with, uh, with the current, uh, situation. Thank you.
Anyone else from council?
Another reading of the motion. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Whereas the legislation act two thousand and six provides definition of newspaper, which applies to every Ontario act and regulation. As a provision requiring publication, meaning a document, A, is printed in cheap form, published at a regular intervals of a week or less and circulated to the general public. And B consists primarily of news on current events or general, of general interest, such as a journal. And whereas the landscape of print media has changed with the evolution of digital news. And whereas in October twenty twenty-three, CEO and president of Metro Line Media Group noted that seventy-one of their community publications outside of the District of Timasming would only be available in digital format moving forward. And whereas some small rural Ontario municipalities like the town of Kirkland Lake will not have the means to bring an application to court to pass for directions and approvals on an alternate manner, providing notice should local print publications transition to digital format only and therefore be resolved in a proactive effort. The council, the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake, does hereby request the provincial government to make an amendment to the legislation act two thousand and six to include digital format as an acceptable means of publication and notice requirements for provincial acts and regulations. And find that this motion be circulated to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Member of Provincial Parliament for Timasming, Cochrane, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, which is AML, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, which is FANOM, and all municipalities within the District of Timasming.
All in favor? Those opposed? None? Motion carries. Seven point two, Mayor Stacy White, town participation in the Santa Claus parade.
Thank you, acting mayor Ranger. Um, I just want to say that this all came about last year thanks to, um, councillor Dolly Dykens, who suggested that, um, participating in the Santa Claus parade was something, a team-building exercise and a show of support for the community, for the council. And so, uh, we are very, very pleased to have participated in the last two years. A note is a large portion of building community is being part of it. It's important, uh, that community members see not only members of council, but staff as real people. People who care and take part in local activities. We want to support the local businesses and volunteers like those from the Chamber of Commerce who continue to add to the quality of life of our town. That being said, um, the articles in this motion will definitely add to that. It will give the opportunity for volunteers of all staff and their families to partake. It'll allow the, um, use of a corporate vehicle if available, uh, for brand recognition, and it will allow us a small, um, but reasonable budget as well. And so this will be only for this term of council and next term will be able to make their own decisions.
Seconded by councillor Casey Owens.
Thank the mayor, country question.
Any questions from council? Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, uh, through you, uh, and I'm acting mayor. I just, well, uh, uh, I mean, I have no problem with this. I think it's a good idea. We'll be running for supplies and all of that. And there's an indication of towards insurance. I'm not sure if it vehicles insurance, so what are we talking about? And then there will be issue of, uh, I'm not too sure if, uh, we do get a vehicle, uh, are we all insured, anyone who was insured as a council member to drive that, uh, company vehicle? I'm not too sure. So I just want to make sure that that we understand that so that we don't get it to argument a little bit.
Absolutely.
What, you know?
I do appreciate that. I will defer to, um, Madam Clerk, who will have those answers readily available.
Thank you, Madam.
She is prepped and ready.
Do you have the chair? You had a conversation with the mayor when she was drafting her motion. Um, how about, this is the wrong one. Sorry, there would be, there's lots of papers and things. And I want to make sure I get it right. So the the CAO and I met, uh, before, uh, we provided some changes to the um, some, some style changes to the motion, uh, because we had some concerns in in terms of the same concerns that you brought up, councillor, uh, insurance. We want to make sure that everybody was aware of the liability. So, um, there, there is, uh, there may be some additional insurance requirements that, uh, are required for staff to investigate, uh, to this effect. Um, so things like outside of the scope of regular operations, usually game day event insurance is, is procured. Um, however, there's other opportunities such as, uh, the town to participate in the parade with the Kirkland Lake fire and, and or the ladder truck or other, because their fleet is, um, covered through insurance. Um, that, in terms of the firepower. So those, those things are being, I would say, will be investigated by staff. Um, in terms of I'll leave it at that. I think that's
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Well, if I'm, can I follow up? Can I follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, yeah, thank you very much, but he didn't really clear things out for me. Like, in this motion, I'm going to go through with that. But the second part of my question would be, uh, which is, we should speak to a corporate vehicle. I understand that's just one vehicle. Is that correct? Or that could be more than one vehicle available, cover seven of us, let's say, several people showed up. So are we talking about a vehicle? Or there will be other vehicles that will be available for others to use? So I need that to be cleaned up a little bit.
Through you, Madam Chair, to all the councils and to your question. Uh, the other challenge that that the staff need to look into is that, is the town fleet, is it only staff that operate the town?
That's correct, yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, and it has to be someone insured with the correct licensing.
That's right.
Um, to operate the town fleet. So if there are no, uh, volunteers from the staff, uh, that this could be a challenging, uh, this could be challenging in terms of being able to offer town fleet in the parade. So if all of these elements would be reviewed before the parade, this is something that the CAO can manage. Um, and if it needs to come back to council because there is a large sum attached to, um, a budgetary constraint to participate, then that is certainly something that would be brought back to council for consideration. But we don't have answers yet because we haven't been able to properly go to an insurance, um, go to our insurance provider and ask, what is game day insurance going to look like in terms of, if, if this is the course of action, we decide to go, man? Um, and again, like I had mentioned, uh, we have other fleet that is already participating in the parade, which may lend to having a collaborative, collaborative effort between those participating in the parade, um, and, uh, with the fire department.
Yeah, okay.
I have one to load.
Yes.
Uh, to you, acting mayor. I was able to have a very quick conversation with our procurement manager, his main way. And I asked him a question about insurance, who is currently investigating of the insurance requirement on, for a, uh, involvement in the parade. Uh, at first glance, either would be much more to ensure, um, may or even be involved as just in, in former insurance company of, uh, the participation in the parade. So again, that is, uh, being investigated by that.
Councillor Kylie?
Through you, uh, Madam Acting Mayor. Um, are we aware whether the chamber has liability insurance, just for curiosity?
Do you mind, acting mayor? The, the chamber, um, does obtain insurance for the parade. I know it's part of their parade per everybody.
Through councillor Bennett.
Uh, through acting mayor, want to to you. Of course, I'm, I'm in support of, um, a show of unity from the council and the five hundred dollars is, it's fine. Um, I'm just wondering what your vision is for a use of a vehicle. Um, like, how do we do that when there's, so, so it, just, what's your vision?
So I don't think the use of a vehicle meant specifically one singular vehicle. Um, yeah, because it, is it reasonable to expect seven vehicles, because there's seven members? Would it be reasonable to expect thirty? If thirty volunteers from staff said, I, I want to walk in the parade or I want to be in the parade? So the, the vision would be there would be a leading vehicle, like um, currently right now, the fire department does participate. We have walked behind it ourselves and got lost in the crowd, but we walked, you know, with it. So, so this is the thing, it depends on how everything plays out for planning. Are we able to get one from Parks and Rec that the Parks and Rec staff decorate? Are we able to get one from museum members that museum also want to join in? And then council, like, and this is the thing, we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves to one specific vision of my choosing at this point. So I don't think the intent was a vehicle being one singular vehicle, just.
Follow up on that, I'm not in there. Um, yeah, I guess I, I'm not so clear why, like, I understand branding, but I'm not sure why, like, are are you planning for everybody to ride? Are you planning for us to walk and have one vehicle when we walk inside the vehicle? I'm just, I, I'm not sure.
Councillor Dykens, I think you're sort of getting in the weeds and details.
No, it, it's really a critical part of the story that, like, I, I don't understand the need of, of vehicle. That, that's what I'm
Okay, so in general, the parade is with wows. So, so that would be the the, the possible use of a vehicle would be to create a, a town woe. The branding is because the town of Kirkland Lake is on all of our vehicles. That's, there's, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Councillor Owens?
It was just to, to add, it, it's a, like, we're councillors for a town of Kirkland, we're one big corporation, like, we want our name as a corporation out there. I think that's what the, the whole, it wasn't specifically vehicle we had in mind when this came to mind. It's just like we want the name Kirkland out, town Kirkland out there. In the end, if we get to ride on the fire trucks, I'm a hoarder. Sign me up and I'll, I'll go down that road if, if I can, but as long as it says Kirkland Lake somewhere on there.
Okay, uh, let's, I just want to pull everybody back and put forward is that there's a motion on the table that's got a budgetary consideration and questions about insurance. I don't want to take forward questions that were, are detail oriented and putting us in the weeds when we've had more questions about potential parade participation than budgetary things coming from the treasurer and or Aqua uh, proposals. So going forward, does anybody else in council have a question? Or a point to make? Councillor Owen?
I have a comment. I'm on Santa's not a list. I know it and I don't care. But I fully support five hundred dollars being spent. And I'm confident that staff will figure out the insurance for us and then we'll all have Merry Christmases in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else from council?
Can I have the motion read, please? Certainly, Madam Chair, or Madam Chair. Uh, moved by councillor Stacy White, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Whereas the annual Santa Claus parade is a longstanding tradition with the behavior of the founder, Lloyd. And whereas the town's participation in local ceremonies, events and celebrations foster positive and collaborative relationships within the community. And whereas members of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term of council have participated in the Sandwells Parade hosted by the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce during the last two years. And whereas a devoted budget and the use of a corporate vehicle greatly enhance the town's participation in the parade. Therefore, be resolved with council for the incorporation of the town of Kirkland Lake. Hereby approve an annual allocation within the mayor and council's portion of the town's operating budget and a sum of five hundred dollars are used towards insurance and supplies associated with the town's participation in the parade and for the remainder of this term of council. And find that a corporate vehicle will be available for the town's participation in the parade for the remainder of this term of council.
All in favor? Opposed, none, motion carries. Seven point three is deferred by Stacy White, Mayor Stacy White, guaranteed livable income. Seven point four deferred, councillor Dykens, uh, opposition to strong mayor powers. Seven point five, I'd like to call up acting, acting mayor councillor.
Just be chair.
Okay, chair, acting chair. Uh, councillor Shaba, as I am seconded on the, uh, motion to be read.
I didn't certainly wish the acting chair.
Uh, item seven point five, Mayor Stacy White, takes the long.
Yes. Yes. Sorry, I thought it was, I thought it was councillor Ranger. Go ahead.
Let's go, let's start.
I know, I'm, I, it's my turn, it's my turn. My apologies, acting chair, go ahead.
Take two. Item seven point five, Mayor Stacy White, takes the Long Term Care Amendment Act.
Thank you, uh, acting chair Shaba. So currently, there is a significant difference between what legislation allows currently, what, uh, versus what is being asked. So currently, what is occurring is if your spouse needs to be placed into long-term care, you remain at home unless you have the same level of healthcare needs that would place you into a long-term care. So what this legislative request is, is to allow both spouses to be relocated into long-term care regardless of their ability to stay on their own. So, so, um, I, I just wanted to clarify that because the wording, if you're not familiar with long-term care, you may not see what the difference is. But can you imagine living decades and decades with your spouse and they become ill and now you have to live separate? That would be devastating and your health outcomes would, uh, decrease as well for both partners being separated alone. That would be devastating and your health outcomes would uh decrease as well for both partners being separated alone. So that is just the point of this is that I would like to see the support motion move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go on to the second, uh councillor Dolly Diker.
Thank you, Acting.
Award of two chair. Award of two chair.
Um I seconded this motion because I feel the same as the mayor in that it's giving the option. If somebody continue or wants to live independently of their spouse. Uh at this point, they would, they don't have that as an option. They are forced to. Uh the decision is being made for them. I like that in those golden years, hopefully their golden years. Um you have the option to um maintain or continue to have that type of special relationship. Where you're living in the same um spaces together. And so I think this would be an improvement in quality of life for both the one that's being required to live in uh long term care as well as uh for their partner.
Thank you. Uh yes, councillor Owen.
Yes, through you, Acting Chair. Um I know from personal experience with my parents where my father was on a respirator. And uh my mother provided care at home for him. And there was only two alternatives at that point. It was my father would either be institutionalized. Or my mother would be trained to care for him and and go on a respirator. But for the two of them to be separated, I honestly believe would shorten my father's life. And it would as short, it would have decreased the quality of life that my parents were able to enjoy together. So any move to keep spouses together when there's extra healthcare needed. And that doesn't put the strain on the the other spouse to provide that care, uh I think should be encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, I'm a casey box, I didn't read it.
Oh, yeah, I'll be away.
Thank you. Moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by councillor Janet Stranger. Whereas the care, support and happiness of older adults in the town of Kirkland Lake is a priority for council. And whereas older adults deserve dignity and care and have the right to live with their partner at the age. And whereas within the province of Ontario, couples have the right to be accommodated together when entering long term care facilities. Where they meet the eligible criteria of recognition. And whereas the separation of spouses upon entering long term care facilities is an is an all too common occurrence across Ontario. For the couples have different care needs. And whereas Bill twenty one fixing long term care amendment act till death do us part. Was first introduced in a provincial legislature in twenty nineteen and reintroduced in twenty twenty two. And whereas Bill twenty one amend the residents' bill of rights set out in section three of the fixing long term care act twenty twenty one. Deal for spouses not to be separated upon admission and to have accommodation made available for old spouses. So they may continue to live together regardless of their care needs. And whereas Bill twenty one passed its second reading in the provincial legislature on November fifteenth, twenty twenty two. And was subsequently ordered referred to the standing committee on social policy and has yet to be called for the standing committee. And whereas the current sitting provincial government may bring forward a new bill that in principle supports the intent of Bill twenty one fixing long term care amendment act. Therefore, be it resolved, council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake supports any future bill to Bill twenty one fixing long term care amendment act. Surrounding the non-separation of spouses with indifferent care needs upon admission. And that the town of Kirkland Lake requests the provincial legislature to enact any current or future proposed bills to this effect. And finally, that a copy of this motion should be sent to the Honorable Premier of Ontario, the Member of Provincial Parliament for Timiscumee Cochrane. The Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, which has been all and all municipalities within the district of Timiscumee.
All in favor of the motion? Anyone else? Motion carries.
Thank you, Acting Chair.
I have all the choice.
Thank you to Acting Mayor Janet Stranger and Acting Chair Vlad Shaba. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws, eight point one.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read numbered past.
Excuse me, can I be removed as uh?
Oh, certainly. Is there a move for council? Councillor Casey Owens, can I second her, please? Oh, we read it. Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Janet Stranger. It resolved the following bylaw be read numbered past, signed by the mayor, the municipal clerk and the sealed corporation due fix there too. Bylaw number twenty three eighty one being a bylaw to establish the remuneration for members of council for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Item number nine, questions from council. There was none submitted prior to the meeting. Item number ten, notice of motion. None noted. Item number eleven, updates from members of council.
Councillor Dykens. Uh thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to all of council. Um I attended a meeting of the museum and northern history recently. And just an update on the um Ontario Heritage Fund, sorry, trust um actions. So as you all are aware, there was a building condition assessment done within the last couple of years. Um the most recent meeting, uh which the C A O and um Dr. Sackrider, the museum manager. And I met with the architect and four members of the trust. From now to when the weather is good, they're planning their um repairs uh that need to be done um at the museum. So it's broken into immediate and then one to five years and and beyond. So they uh trust has secured two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Ontario Government's capital repair and rehabilitative program. And they need to use those funds before the end of June twenty twenty four. So the plans are in the works now. And uh hopefully they get the most uh critical items on the list done uh by the end of June.
Fine? Go ahead, thank you. Counselor Shaba?
To you, Madam Mayor, yes, I uh I attended the Kirkland Lake Silver uh for the meeting. Uh we're gonna have a go and uh things are progressing and I'm sure that the staff, uh C A O and the staff, we have something. Uh substantive and more detailed to report uh in future uh the future meetings, of council meetings.
Thank you. Anything further from members of council? Okay, we do have um the twenty twenty three council year in review. As twenty twenty three draws to a close, it is my pleasure to deliver this year's municipal review. Currently, a ten year road reconstruction plan and a ten year fleet management document have passed. These will assist staff and council during the budgeting process and provide residents with greater transparency and accountability moving forward. We've made great strides in economic development with the creation of the Kirkland Lake Economic, Kirkland Lake Tourism Development Corporation. Which will aid and encourage activities within Kirkland Lake. Along with the hiring of our new economic development manager and the implementation of the municipal accommodation tax to fund upcoming initiatives. We are well situated to increase economic development and tourism programs and offerings in the future. Thanks to concern to and engaged residents, we saw the four way stop at Saint Jerome installed. As well as the revision of the winter maintenance program. Positive changes can occur within our community when members of the public engage directly with the corporation. We were thrilled to welcome MP Charlie Angus, M P P John Bantoff. And members of the Timmins and Timiscumee Shores Pride Groups. As well as local students and community members for the unveiling of the Pride Crosswalk. Having events that highlight the inclusion of all members of humanity is vital to showcasing Kirkland Lake. As welcoming and thriving and a forward thinking community. We received connecting link funding to assist in road reconstruction at the Bernhard Hospital in Northern College area. We also received N O H F C funding to assist in the delivery of municipal services to the future location of Tar Technologies. Bringing another industry based business to our community. Twenty uh two, yeah, twenty two considerations of notice of motions were introduced by individual council members. With each member bringing forth at least one item this year. Be it for local improvement or lobbying senior levels of government to make changes at the provincial level. Council passed most of these motions, including the investigation of public transportation. The bursary program for students in more than whole secondary education relating to public service. The location and design of a new fire hall and more innovative traffic calming measures for community safety. We celebrated some incredible milestones in years of service. Including twenty years for two staff members, Marlene at T P R and C E O Cheryl Lefrenier at Texentennial Library. Wanda La Chapelle, also of the Kirkland Lake Texentennial Library. And Lori Bond, a community service, have both served Kirkland Lake with a thirty year career and counting. Kirkland Lake would not be the same without our dedicated volunteers who give of themselves consistently for the betterment of our town. This year, Mr. Ted, Mr. Ted Assad celebrated forty years on the Committee of Adjustment. We sincerely thank him and all of our volunteers for the time devoted to vital decision making entities. Looking towards twenty twenty four, we are excitedly awaiting the completion of the Children's Department Refresh Project. At the Texentennial Library, which will be unveiled early in the new year. This project was fully funded by generous donations, including those from Miss Mary Ann Navernak. Peter Van Shay and Agnico Eagle, as well as so many members of the Kirkland Lake community, both past and present. The results of the street strategic plan will be delivered in January. Which will provide council and staff a guiding document upon which decisions will be consistently made for not only twenty twenty four. But for the remainder of this term of council. Based on survey results from staff, administrators, council members, and most importantly, community members. These will be our town priorities moving forward. I'm also pleased to have collaborated with community partners, developers and staff and administration on movements towards housing, accommodation and subdivision planning. But those announcements will have to count at a later date. On behalf of the staff, administration and council of the town of Kirkland Lake. I hope the members of our community look forward to twenty twenty four with the same optimism and positivity we do. Thank you.
Do you have a motion? Certainly, Madam Mayor. Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Dr. Crowley. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be returned.
All in favor? Opposed and then noted, item carried unanimous. We do have one additional information. This is the proclamation of National Alzheimer's Awareness Month for January twenty twenty four. Whereas Alzheimer's Awareness Month is recognized during the month of January to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a degenerative lane disorder that most often occurs in people over the age of sixty five. But can occur in adults in their thirties, forties and fifties. And whereas there are over six hundred and thirty thousand Canadians living with Alzheimer's disease. With a projected almost one million Canadians living with dementia by twenty thirty one. And whereas the Alzheimer's Society Conference misting provides programs and services to all citizens of Cochrane Timiscumee District. And whereas the Alzheimer's Society Cochrane District Timiscumee encourages the council, residents, businesses and services of Kirkland Lake. To break the stigma and fear of exclusion attached to Alzheimer and dementia. And build their community into a dementia friendly community that supports those living with dementia to maintain an active role in our community. To take part in new things and to continue activities they enjoy with confidence. Now therefore, I, Stacy White, Mayor of the Town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty four. As National Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Thank you.
Moved by councillor Janet Stranger, seconded by councillor Vlad Shaba. It resolved the council sanction and proclamation for National Alzheimer's Awareness Month, January twenty twenty four in the town of Kirkland.
All in favor? Opposed and then noted, item carried unanimous. Item number thirteen, closed session, there is none this evening. Items number fourteen, matters from closed session, of course, there are none this evening. Item number fifteen, fifteen point one, bylaw number twenty three dash oh eight two.
Moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Clive Crowley. It resolved the following bylaw be read numbered past, signed by the mayor, municipal clerk. And the sales corporation being fixed there too, bylaw number twenty three eighty two. Being a bylaw confirmed the proceeding of proceedings of council meeting held on Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by councillor Vlad Shaba, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. It resolved that this will be a meeting of council in our term, act six oh five.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and Merry Christmas to everyone we won't see until the new year.